I called the Halsey City Council Meeting of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to order that seven P M. That clock is wrong.
Three.
Sure.
All right, so we're gonna start with our oaths of office, and if we could please have our councillor elect Stacy Strauss, John Miller, and Carl Cropp, please stand up. Okay, so you're going to raise your right hand and repeat on her knee, but we'll start with names first, so I, Carl.
Carl Cropp.
Stacy Strauss.
John Miller.
I have to read it. The duly elected councillor for the city of Halsey.
The elected councillor for the city of Halsey.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Sow.
Sowlemly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
And that I will faithfully perform my duties as councillor.
I will faithfully perform my duties as councillor.
For the city of Halsey to the best of my ability to help me God.
Sorry, I missed the last.
Okay, that's okay.
There was lights going by.
For the city of Halsey, to the best of my ability to help me God.
To the city of Halsey, for the best of my ability to help me God.
All right, you did it.
There was like three police cars going by. There was, yeah, there was like three cops going on American, so I got distracted.
All right, and now Mayor-elect Jerry Lockenbrock, please take a seat. I.
I, Jerry Lockenbrock.
The duly elected mayor of the city of Halsey.
The duly elected mayor of the city of Halsey.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will sup- Go ahead.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
The charter and ordinance of the city of Halsey.
And I will faithfully perform my duties.
I will faithfully perform my duties.
As mayor for the city of Halsey.
As mayor for the city of Halsey.
To the best of my ability to help me God.
The best of my abilities to help me God.
All right, you did it. The smaller bites is the less work.
Very good, yes. Let him come up for air.
Okay, ground, please call and roll.
All right. Councillor Gilson.
Here.
Councillor Cropp.
Here.
Councillor Isom.
Here.
Mayor Lockenbrock.
Here.
Councillor Strauss.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Hookups.
Here.
Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all. I want to thank you all who took time to attend tonight. This is most people we've had in here in a long time. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any guests who are presently present need to fill out the meeting sign-in sheet, name and door, or we're running a hybrid meeting again tonight to continue to allow those who want to attend remotely to do so. Down in background, noise and feedback, remote attendees should meet themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give reports to council. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during this time itself. You can unmute yourself. Do we have any remote attendees?
Just standing.
Just standing, okay. So the next item on the agenda is Councillor Minnet. Approve the Councillor Minnet from December tenth, twenty twenty-four. I would entertain a motion.
Move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve the December tenth City Council minutes is submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion to oppose. I get to absolutely say no. Next item on the agenda is financial reports. Twenty twenty-four, lighting the packet as any comments, discussions concerned. None at the end of the motion.
Move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve December twenty twenty-four financial reports and journal entries as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any agenda adjustments?
We do not have any agenda adjustments.
So next, delegations, and Sheriff is not here yet.
Not yet.
Flying down the road, but now. Let's circle back to them then. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments for non-agenda items. This is time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any items of concern. No, nothing of anything. Okay. Do we have anything remotely?
Yeah, so we had a comment submitted, your public comment submission, and I will just read it for you. Revisiting the current RV ordinance. We feel the current RV ordinance is too open for abuse, and would like to see the city council revert back to the previous ordinance that was in place before the summer of twenty twenty-three. After researching, we noticed that other cities in Lynn County have much stricter restrictions than Halsey has with this revised ordinance. Thank you for your attention to this issue.
So, as a note, Brian and I met with the people writing today and had chatted with them, kind of explained where we were at in the table position right now, waiting for legislation to be redisgussed, for lack of a better word, at the state level, and kind of where that sits since the grants passed, case was overturned, so. I think at some point we're gonna need to look at, but I really think we need to wait till we get more feedback from legislation and from LOC and what their best practices are suggested to be.
No, you covered it.
Is there any issue they had specifically?
I'm sorry.
Was there any issue they had specifically, or just the ordinance in general? Like, was there parts of it that they were narrowing down on that affected them, or that they didn't like, or?
It was very specific to the RV portion in terms of RV residency on private property. Some of the things mentioned were things like duration of allowed RV residency, the number of RVs that they allowed, and some considerations for setbacks.
Yep.
I think some of the stuff we could look at and just eliminate that we've got. I mean, we talked about that, what, two months ago?
Right.
I mean, five vehicles. I think we can pare that down without getting for the state to decide for us.
I think so. So that would be, if we did that, then it'd be in a couple of months, bringing it back up again. So, do you want to wait till legislature, do you want to chip away at it until then?
I think there's some stuff we can easily just skim off the top. It's clearly not suitable for Halsey.
Yeah. So then, in that case, we would probably need to do a work session and to go over it again, because it's not a small piece. I think at this point, do you want to get a consensus on that?
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about it now, I think that it would be appropriate for us to ask for consensus. So the consensus item would be that council would like to go to a work session to make some amendments to the current public camping ordinance in relation to issues around RV residency on private property, and noting that there could be some changes at the state level that might require us to revisit it again down the line.
Have we got any other concerns or comments from citizens that aren't written or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah. Okay.
This particular complaint, I'm very familiar with, is exactly what I've talked about when we talked about this a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
That basically one family has allowed another family to move a RV onto their property, so it's become a double residency.
Right.
And I'm not sure exactly how they're discharging their wastewater.
That's one thing that was concerned. We have to discuss that as the gray and black water disposal. Okay, I think we have consensus on that, so. Uh, we have to come up with a date.
Okay.
So, uh, we don't have to do that right now.
Okay, I can reach out.
What is the very last, what, Tuesday?
Well, the last Tuesday is June, though.
Yeah.
The last Tuesday of the month?
It's June. I'm done with so long.
Are you here?
Last Tuesday this month.
Yeah.
The last Tuesday of this month might be when some legal organ city is on hold really quick.
Oh, yeah.
Might not be an option.
A short turnaround.
Yeah, and that is a short turnaround, so I think that the options are looking at either the first Tuesday of the following month, or pushing it out until the last Tuesday of the month.
I'd be more inclined with first Tuesday.
February fourth?
Are you here?
Maybe.
Um, any objections to February fourth?
I'm like fifty-fifty. I think Aria has something, uh, her rock climbing gym that day for like a program, so I don't know what time that gets over.
Okay, um, I'm gonna hold it as a placeholder, and we can continue discussion. We can use our group chat that we use for quorum chat.
No.
Just have a date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just can't talk about things that we might want to do.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we may have, he was just saying he'll be gone the fourth, but he'll be here the fifth, the last Tuesday, but unless we do a different day, too.
So for the new council members, the reason we don't talk about items in the group chat for quorum chat or elsewhere unless it's in council is because it, doing so would be a violation of public media law, so.
So we can only talk about the RV residence.
Right, yeah. So, until we meet, I would suggest people go onto the ordinance on the website and pull down the RV section and camping section, and review it, and make notes for yourselves.
So have any access to our previous ordinance? Previous to the one that we put in two years ago, whatever it was.
I know it shows revised. I don't know if it's on.
It was a whole lot more stripped down than under right now. It's huge.
Yes, we do, because we created the public camping portion entirely. It didn't exist before, so that was like a new chapter in the nuisance section, I believe. Make that nonsense. Anyways, um, don't hold me to that, but it is a new chapter in our municipal code, and, um, previously it was more in like the parking section.
Right.
And so it was about parking RVs and right away, and it was pretty much limited to that. It's just not allowed. And so we do have our historical ordinances on file, and we can include that in our work session.
Well, yeah, I was just thinking of especially for the new council members to be able to access that.
Yes, definitely.
When did we do that?
What's that?
When did we do it? Was it two?
Twenty-three.
Was it, huh?
The twenty-three, wasn't it?
As a matter of fact, it does, right there.
So it says.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay. Anything else? So next item on the agenda is reports to council. This one will be the city administrative report.
Okay, once again, remember to talk about, so, um, some of the funding efforts we've submitted to grant for three hundred and fifty thousand, I discussed that a little bit last month. My house has been submitted. It is for portions of the, remaining portions of the project that include things like impacting in the ground between the new wells and the water treatment plants, electrical and programming controls for the new well, and for the existing controls of the water treatment plant. Those should be announced and marked, so fingers crossed. I continue to look for other opportunities, and I will write all the notes I can find that makes sense for our need. Um, I'm also continuing to watch the federal earmark funds, but also the state level, which is what helped us get some of the money that we already have for the, for the well. There's that same closed milestone, get fed. If there's an opportunity there, I'm certainly gonna ask.
Yep.
Um, we do have, actually, the mayor and I are scheduled to meet with Representative Jamie Kate, who obviously is still um, and her staff this week to discuss Halsey, local community issues, and potential kind of opportunities at the state level. Phase one, which is that drilling the well portion that's fully funded at this point, is we've selected our contractor. It's expensive. And it doesn't lie with our updated estimates for costs. It's just hurts every time. So right now it's estimated at four hundred and fifty thousand for that portion of the project. Um, a pre-construction meeting is being held on site, not Thursday. It is actually Wednesday this week, and I will be there. Our public works guys will be there along with our civil rights engineers, our GSI, who are geological engineers, and our construction contractors. So we do not yet have a break round date, but our deadline to complete is June first, and we don't have any reason to believe that we're off track for that date. Um, library changes. This one's actually really fun. So I would like you to please show me and welcoming our new librarian, Caitlin Watts. And so I, you know, I don't want to just read this thing to introduce you. If you want to introduce yourself a little bit, you're welcome to.
Yeah, um, hi, I'm Caitlin, and I'm really looking forward to starting as a librarian here in town. Aside from that, I'm also a tattoo artist in Brownsville, so I'm kind of really well with my schedule, and I think it'll be really nice to be involved with the community. I have a lot of history in event planning, so I have some upcoming events that I'm looking forward to planning for the library to help increase funds and accessibility for people in town. Um, right now, I'm really gracious that they are looking at my schedule. I won't be there full-time until probably March. I'm still in tattoo school, and then I'm also a snowboard instructor, so my weekends are a little bit busy, just as, uh, yeah, as of right now. So, yeah, so hopefully March I will be there full-time, and if anybody has any ideas or contributions to upcoming events, I would love to hear them. But, yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
And if there's any council members that want to volunteer on an occasional weekend, we'd hardly appreciate it.
Um, and so obviously this comes with a part two, and that is that Jen has decided to transition to more of an on-call position. She has a long history of volunteers over the library, and so she's very familiar with it. She is pursuing other educational pursuits, and this is no longer a good fit for her. And so we are glad to keep her on in a different kind of capacity, and for now, Jen will still be at the library part-time. She, while she's training Caitlin, and as her hours reduce and Caitlin's hours increase, until, again, she's going to be just transitioning to on-call after that point. Um, a couple of things that were not in my written report, new developments. Um, I'm working to have updates from the school, so that we can have them in multiple venues. Uh, and so I reached out to Dina at the school district, and there's a few things happening at the school. So the elementary school is having something called Lit Night on March sixth, and they're serving dinner and offering activities in honor of National Rama. Um, I, other things that are pending is that they have a board meeting tonight for the school board, and some of the agenda items are appointing board members. They will be also looking at high school bell schedule and, oh, for the second semester, so coming in very quickly, and voting whether to pursue the bond as well. And so I don't have any of those, and more information about those pending things, but more information will be available on their website. Uh, the great side of the project has obviously been moving forward. It has, fortunately, the noise from the grinder is much quieter than we expected, and because of that, they've been able to just keep going. So we originally at council decided that we could only allow the ten days of grinding, because we were anticipating that it was going to be crazy loud, and we received absolutely no complaints. Um, work trudges along. It has been actually pretty impressive to see them get that thing down, once they revisited and started back on the work. And so we have extended their original ten days to continue to see that sort of they wrap it up. Um, a couple reminders, city day of the Capitol is January twenty-eighth. This is truly last call if you want to go. Right now I have Councillor Isom, Councillor Gilson, and Mayor Lockenbrock registered. Um, for anybody that is available and wants to go, it's a full-day event in Salem. Uh, just, you know, and I'll register you. Uh, the other thing is elected essentials training, really, really fantastic for new councillors, however, great for, uh, people who have been serving for longer, and that is February fifth in Salem, which is a full day. It will be offered online after that for people that aren't able to attend those things. Um, so again, if you want to attend either of those, just let me know. Uh, upcoming events, January seventeenth, we have a work drag here at City Call, and they do need donors. It's not been super reserved. Um, and City Call is closed for MLK Day on January twentieth. Any questions? Okay, great.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is the public works department.
Can we go back?
Sure. Oh, yes. Back up and have Senator Brandy just give his report.
He's enjoying the peace and quiet just so.
My radio's turned off, everything's good. Um, so December can bring a lot of issues for us, especially a mob force arriving at the holidays, like cars get broken into and bail theft, packages stolen off porches and stuff. Um, as you see, we didn't have any of that, which is fantastic. Um, we had one incident of theft that was reported to us four days after it happened, actually from the gas station. Um, and the deputy who took that call knows who that suspect is, just a matter of catching up with her, which is great. Uh, not a lot of talking points, which is great. Um, what we call a POH through the mental health call. We don't, you don't hear that term a lot, so a POH, we call it police officer toll. Uh, so if someone's going through a mental health crisis and they don't want to get help for themselves, if we believe they're a danger to themselves or others, we can take them into custody. And the only difference is they go to a hospital instead of the jail. We kind of make them get treatment in the bell, so, um, that was something that happens, happens last month as well. Um, and gosh, I mean, for, uh, holidays and everything, we had one arrest was related to a war. We see a lot of domestic violence stuff when families get together, come out of town visiting, and, uh, so just overall, pretty, pretty quiet month, uh, which is great, especially during the holidays.
Yeah.
Yeah. Questions, comments, concerns?
I've appreciated the patrols done in the grade school.
Yeah.
More so, it's definitely.
They're mostly done by Deputy Supple.
Yeah, a lot of the parents have made comments, and I'm kind of noticed.
Cool, yeah. Yeah, she's, she's very proactive, probably one of our most, um, community-oriented deputies that we have. Yeah, very involved with schools, volunteering, um, doing stuff like that, so she's awesome.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, be safe.
I'm sorry, really quickly, I just want to say to Caitlin Watts, where's Deputy Supple, where's the mayor?
Yeah.
Um. I, that's what I do, that's why I was like, oh, I actually don't know how to counter. Um, she's just, uh, I agree, she's very proactive, and I know she gets a time scare a lot, but she checks in at least once a week. Just to ask if there's anything that we need, if there's anything that we should be aware of, so I miss.
Yeah, yeah, I'll pass that, pass that on to her.
Good. Glass call.
Last call.
Thank you much.
All right, guys.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to Andy in House Works.
Yeah, can you hear me?
You can, yeah.
Fantastic. So on my report for this month, uh, last month, actually, um, we're still troubleshooting, uh, issue with the generator and variable frequency drive uh, during the Tuesday exercising. We're working with, uh, North Coast Electric and Tag Automation Group to help us, um, with a possible solution. At this time, we're juggling with everybody's schedule. With the, um, well ninety-eight, we, um, did some adjustments. Um, when we had the installed, we, we had the, sorry, I'm fumbling. When we had, um, the pump installed um, recently, uh, we noticed that there was a different level in the static and drawdown, and so uh, we used the equipment from OAWU, and we were able to, uh, get the correct, um, static level and draw down there, so that was a nice adjustment for us. Um, also on the water plant, uh, we rebuilt, uh, the clay valve bypass line in the water plant. Um, in the wastewater department, we started discharging, uh, water from the lagoon, and, um, so far, all of our, everything's working smoothly, so, uh, we like to hear that. Uh, all of our generators for our water plant and our lift station and our lagoon generators have been, um, had their six-month tune-ups. And last but not least, um, we had six asphalt patches in town, uh, that were completed by Blackstone Construction. Um, these areas were, um, patched because we had water leaks in those areas, so, uh, we were glad that we were able to, um, get those projects completed. And that's all I have for my report. Is there any questions?
Quite crowded tonight. Well, thank you much, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
So next is the library report with Jen and Caitlin.
Do you need to, is it, oh, you're not prepared for the time, I'm so sorry. Cause do I usually have to do that?
Yes, okay, I was not notified of that, I'm so sorry.
I was just gonna be able to join you, so, yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
Broke this report.
Yeah, I did write the report.
Do you want to read it? That's right here.
Oh, I think you should.
Okay, great, I think that's. Okay, so, um, this month we have a total of eighty-five patrons, one of them being a new car holder. Caitlin has had the opportunity to introduce herself, but it does still have a little bit of work here. She just started with us last week, and again, is training with Jen, uh, having to be in front of the team, and I think that Caitlin is somebody who's an idea person, so I think it's gonna be really exciting. We've already had a lot of opportunity to chat, and she has a lot of really, really fun ideas of things that we might try at the library event, so she's ready to jump in.
And last but not least, my report. This month wasn't a whole lot going on. I had some valuable stuff going on, but I did take, uh, part in a couple of conference calls. One was the Oregon Mayors Association. The Oregon Climate Action Committee has or is getting ready to release their action plan, and we met to talk about any potential costs to communities. Oftentimes, the state comes down with these, these wonderful ideas that are well-meaning, but then they have these essentially unfunded mandates that communities have to abide by. And so we kind of want to get ahead of any of these, uh, and it looks like that this action plan thus far is going to be one hundred percent grant-based from the federal government. Good news, although we're still gonna watch out for any little surprises, um, any things that we have to do potentially for a report that we have to come up with. This could take staff hours, so, uh, if there's more on that, I'll, I'll find out. I'll let council know. Um, Oregon Veterans Affairs, uh, organization is putting their filing touches on the twenty-twenty-five standout scheduling. Um, for new council members, if you don't know what a standout is, it's when VA and state organization gets together in a certain area and they provide services to the local, uh, veterans that can't get to the VA either in Salem, Portland, or Eugene, or Roseburg. Um, oftentimes, there's vision, dental, uh, some mental health stuff, making sure people have, uh, food and have housing, things like that. So they're gonna be releasing that schedule here shortly, and then, uh, got signed up for two Oregon Emergency Management Training Programs. Uh, first one's February eighteenth, nineteenth, it's, uh, both virtual. Um, and the first one's mitigating hazards with land use planning, and that goes along with our, uh, mutual hazards, uh, meeting. Um, so it kind of go hand in hand with that. And the second one is March twelfth. And the second one is March twelfth and thirteenth, it's community planning for disaster recovery. Lot of time to get ready for disaster and then you don't think about what's needed afterwards. So if you look at what happened in the Carolinas and Virginia after the hurricane, they're still recovering. And what's going on in California with the wildfire, they're gonna have recovery for years. And so it's best to kind of get a plan ahead of time. And that's it. Questions, comments, concerns? So there's no old business, so we'll slide right past that. And the new business, need to appoint a council president. And I would like to nominate Michelle Isom to continue on as council president. What's that?
I'm fine with that.
So.
Does that require a second?
It does.
Yeah, second.
Thanks, Terry.
Question carries. Welcome again.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to be here.
That's like being volunteer, huh?
Yeah, thanks. I know, I can't believe this is like crazy.
So the next item is appointing a budget officer for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. For the new council members, typically, the budget officer is our city administrator, since she is eyeball deep in the budget already, has a firm understanding of it. So unless there's any other situations, I would entertain a motion.
Move that the governing body of city of Halsey appoint and designate the city administrator to be the budget officer for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. And the last item is approval of the budget calendar year, fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. That should be the last page of your packet. Any concerns or questions about the calendar? So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of city of Halsey approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget calendar as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. And there are no ordinances or resolutions. With that, we will adjourn at seven thirty. Seven thirty two.
Yeah.
I know.
That's a fast one, my goodness.
There's a lot of papers to sign after, so I guess it's good timing to have the fast one. I just wanted to tell our new counselors that you should not anticipate.